Good afternoon. Can I have your attention, please? Can we close those doors, please? Thank you. Thank you. Quiet on the floor, please.
Recording in progress.
At this time, please place all electronic devices to vibrate, Mr. City Clerk.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Charter meeting of January 3, 2024. I am Michael McSweeney, the City Clerk and Clerk of the Council, and I would like to thank you for joining us. I call this meeting to order pursuant to Section 42 of the Charter of the City of New York. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. On December 20, 2023, the Council of the City of New York received, ordered, printed, and filed a communication from the New York City Board of Elections entitled M-184 of 2023, which certifies the election of all 51 members of the City Council in the 2023 general election. I now direct the clerk to call the roll of those duly-elected members of the Council for the purposes of ascertaining the presence of a quorum.
Abreu.
Present.
Adams.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Present.
Banks.
Present.
Botcher.
Present.
Brennan.
Present.
Brewer.
Here.
Areola.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Feliz.
Presente.
Gennaro.
Here.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden. Carr.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar morado. Marte.
Present.
Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Jose.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Sanchez.
Aqui.
Borelli.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Vernikov.
Here.
Wan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Juan. Mr. City Clerk, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Seeing that a quorum is present, I now request that all Council members please stand for the oath of office. Council members, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member in the state your district, in the state your borough, in the state your county, in the city of New York according to the best of my ability. Council members, congratulations. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Imam Sheikh Safraz Bakas, Imam and spiritual leader of Masjid Al-Abedin, which is located at 10414 127th Street in Queens. Please rise.
Let's pray together. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, the sun has risen upon our land and the new year has dawned upon us. We thank you, O Lord, for the immense blessings you have showered upon us. O almighty God, make this year better than the last. Grant us good health, peace, and security. We beseech you, O Creator and Sustainer, make us the means by which we feed the hungry, clothe the naked, shelter the homeless, and bring hearts together for your sake. Strengthen our resolve to be champions of a good that blutches out evil and a light that illuminates darkness. We are weak, O Lord, so grant us the ability to fulfill the oaths we have taken to serve the citizen of our city and our nation. We pray for peace, O Lord, Lord of beauty and happiness. O Lord, you are the eternal. You are eternal life and everlasting peace by your essence and attributes. Everlasting peace is from you and it returns to you only. O Sustainer, grant us the life of true peace and usher us into the boat of peace. O glorious and bounteous one, you are the blessed and sublime. Show us with a love that causes hate to dissipate. Unite us on the truth no matter who stands opposed. Rectify our fears that make us people who guard the scales of justice. Grant the men and women of this chamber the wisdom and courage to uphold and promote the values of our great nation. May we honor one another and glorify your holy name in unison and inspire in us the ability to make this world a better place for generations to come. In your great and magnificent name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I now recognize Councilmember Adrian Adams to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Imam Sheikh Safraz Bakas of Masjid Al-Abedin in our beloved Richmond Hill, Queens. My brother has been an inclusive and dynamic faith leader in our community for many years. He's worked closely with healthcare institutions and our local precincts to provide spiritual guidance and pastoral care. During the pandemic, Imam Bakas was encouraging vaccination and supporting community members of all backgrounds. Imam Bakas is a true servant leader who cares deeply about the well-being of his community, and I am personally honored to know him and to have worked with him in my district and across the borough of Queens. His words have very special meaning for me, especially today. My brother Imam, I thank you for all that you do for the Great 28 and for our entire city. And I make a motion to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you. So ordered. We now move to M1 of 2024, the continuation of the 2022 to 2023 Rules of the Council. I now recognize Councilmember Diana Ayala to make a motion regarding the rules of the Council.
I make a motion pursuant to Section 46 of the New York City Charter that the 2022 to 2023 rules of the City of the Council, as amended, be continued and in effect until new rules shall be adopted or set rules shall be otherwise amended or modified.
I will now call for a voice vote on the motion. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move on to M2 of 2024, the nomination of the Speaker. I hereby open the floor to nominations for the office of Speaker of the City Council pursuant to Section 44 of the Charter for the term commencing January 1, 2024 and terminating December 31, 2025. I recognize Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Adrian E. Adams for the Speaker of the New York City Council.
I now recognize Councilmember Selvina Brooks-Powers.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Adrian E. Adams for the position of Speaker of the New York City Council.
I now recognize Councilmember Justin Brannan.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Adrian E. Adams for the position of Speaker of this body.
I now recognize Councilmember Crystal Hudson.
Permission to have a couple minutes?
So ordered.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm honored to join many of my colleagues to nominate Adrian Adams to continue her historic legacy as Speaker for another term and lead this majority-women body for another two years. As I said when I voted for Speaker Adams two years ago, our existence as Black women is deemed impossible. We are to this, we're to that, but we, women, Black women, Latinx women, Asian women, queer women, trans women, disabled women, immigrant women, we are enough. And this speaker has proven something we all know. In politics, if you want something done, ask a woman. Under the leadership of the city's first Black City Council Speaker, we made history last session and tackled our city's most pressing issues. We passed more than 288 bills, outpacing the last two-year sessions in 2001 and 2003. This included legislation to address the Black maternal mortality crisis, bolster the city FEPs program, expand childcare access, enhance mental health supports, and protect LGBTQ+ folks receiving gender-affirming care or birthing people seeking abortions in New York City from retaliation. If that's what we've accomplished in two years, I can't wait to see what another two will bring under this speaker's leadership. I'm proud today to nominate my Spelman sister, Speaker Adrian Adams, to continue her work as the Speaker of the City Council. Thank you.
I now recognize Councilmember Amanda Farias.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Adrian E. Adams for the position of Speaker of the New York City Council.
I now recognize Councilmember Carlina Rivera.
Thank you so much. Today we assemble to start our new term and elect a speaker who will lead with courage and compassion. I proudly speak in favor of Adrian Adams, a person of incredible grace and dignity, a tremendous public servant, and an elected official who has never strayed from doing what is right and what is a priority for those who need our support the most. From focusing on green energy goals, expanding equitable economic opportunities for New Yorkers, putting children, families, seniors, and our working class first, to transportation improvements, small business help, and advocating for our disabled neighbors and LGBTQ+ people, she has done it. This work in the complex and diverse issues we face are in constant demand of our attention, and all of it made the council's agenda in just two years, with Speaker Adams rising to every occasion. Let me get personal for a minute and attest to what I've seen in the most grounded way possible. After all, I am a Capricorn, and it is our season. In a majority-women council operating within an industry that can be unforgiving to women, to Black women especially, making decisions when others seek to discredit, Councilmember Adams climbed and climbed, pulling up every single person she could. In accomplishments in fighting for reproductive justice and abortion access and asserting that housing is truly a human right and being brave enough to take on reform within our criminal legal system. I say thank you, Madam Speaker, and ask that we once again nominate Adrian E. Adams, Speaker of the New York City Council, and to lead the greatest place on earth, our home.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I now close nominations and direct the clerk to call the roll. Council members, when your name is called, please state the name of the nominee you are voting for.
Abreu. I vote in support of Speaker Adrian E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Adams.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Areola.
I vote in support of Speaker Adrian Adams.
I vote Adrian E. Adams.
Ayala.
Adrian E. Adams.
Banks.
I proudly vote in support of Adrian E. Adams.
Borelli.
I thought this was my chance. It wasn't.
I support Adrian E. Adams. Congratulations.
Botcher.
I proudly support Adrian E. Adams.
Brennan.
I vote for Adrian Adams.
Brewer.
I vote for Adrian E. Adams. She's nice, she's normal, and she's a good manager.
Brooks-Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Two years ago, I rose in this chamber to nominate Adrian Adams as the first-ever Black Speaker of this council. We knew the election of our class was a beacon of hope to so many in our communities. We were the first-ever majority-women council in the city's history and the most diverse council in its history, full of clear-eyed leaders with a passion for making New York work for everybody. But the promise of that election was rivaled by an uncertainty about our future. We were still in the thick of the COVID-19 pandemic. Another wave of infection and death had just crested and crashed over our city. At that crucial moment, we chose Adrian Adams as our speaker. We believed she had the vision and the compassion to honor the promise of this council and the strength and the experience to confront the challenges we face. After two years, it is abundantly clear. We were right. Speaker Adams has executed a bold agenda to improve the lives of every New Yorker, irrespective of race or class or neighborhood. She was ushered to passage, she has ushered to passage transformative legislation across issue areas. She has sought to increase affordable housing access under her watch. We've built tens of thousands of new housing units, reformed the city FEPs voucher program, and established a fair housing plan that will guide development in the years to come. She has fought to protect the right of every woman seeking an abortion. She has championed investments in public safety, expanded childcare programs, secured nearly $100 million in annual funding for fare fares. The list goes on. She has led this city council through two budget cycles during which she has defended the essential public services and programs on which our constituents depend. This city is stronger, safer, cleaner, and kinder as a direct result of her leadership. Today, we herald the start of a new session. This moment is no less urgent than the last. The needs of our communities are still great. We must build more housing, strengthen our schools, increase access to healthcare. We face economic headwinds that put pressure on our budget in the years to come. But the promise of this council endures, and it is stronger than ever. We have an opportunity to build on the bold work of these past two years, to move ahead in agenda that uplifts New Yorkers in every corner of this city. Speaker Adams has proven that she is the right person for the job, and I could not be prouder to serve under her leadership as we enter into this new term. So with great pride, I nominate my friend, Representative of the Great 28, Adrian Adams, Speaker of the New York City Council.
Caban.
I cast my vote for Councilmember Adrian E. Adams.
Carr.
I vote for Adrian E. Adams.
De La Rosa.
I vote in support of Adrian E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Dinowitz.
I vote for Adrian E. Adams.
Farias.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
Thank you. I'm pleased to express my wholehearted support for Councilmember Adrian E. Adams as the next New York City Council Speaker. Adrian's unwavering dedication to public service, coupled with her extensive experience and proven leadership, make her the ideal candidate to lead our council. Councilmember Adams has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to addressing the diverse needs of our communities. Through her tenure in the council and previous as Speaker, she has advocated for the initiatives that prioritize education, affordable housing, and economic development, all that impact the most marginalized throughout the city. Her focus on fostering inclusivity and equitable opportunities for all New Yorkers aligns seamlessly with the values we hold dear. In times of unprecedented challenges, Councilmember Adams's resilience and ability to collaborate across party lines shine through. She has a track record of bringing people together to find practical solutions to complex issues. As we navigate the current landscape of our city, her leadership will be invaluable in the next two years. Councilmember Adams possesses the vision, experience, and dedication needed to effectively lead the New York City Council. I'm confident that, under her stewardship, our city will continue to thrive and remain a beacon of progress for all of its residents. And with that, I support and vote for my soror and Councilmember Adrian E. Adams as the next New York City Council Speaker.
Feliz.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
I proudly vote for Council Speaker Adrian E. Adams. These past two years, we've done so much for the people of the City of New York. We've prioritized issues that they care about, including affordable housing, including safety, public safety and fire safety, including education, and so much more. We've done so much for the people of the City of New York, and I look forward to continue resolving problems and prioritizing issues that the people of New York City care about. Speaker Adrian Adams is a great listener. Speaker Adrian Adams is a great problem solver. So I proudly vote for Speaker Adrian Adams and look forward to continuing the great work. Thank you.
Gennaro.
Thank you. I proudly and wholeheartedly support Adrian E. Adams for the position of Speaker, and I wish to be associated with the remarks of Councilmembers Brooks-Powers and Farias. Thank you.
Hanif.
I vote in support of Adrian E. Adams.
Hanks.
I proudly stand in support of Councilmember Adrian E. Adams for Speaker. Congratulations.
Holden.
I vote for Adrian E. Adams, the Speaker.
Hudson.
Proudly for Adrian E. Adams.
Joseph.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
I rise today to vote for Speaker Adams, also known as my sister Speaker. The past two years under your leadership have been a beacon of hope and a testament of tenacity, the embodiment of poise and determined values. Your historic ascension as the first Black woman to lead this body shows us that it is possible. But most importantly, staying focused on the purpose to win victories for those who have been forgotten for so long. Under your leadership, we have a majority-led women council. We pass historic legislation from criminal justice, education, housing, abortion access, and so much more. Today, I publicly thank you and give you the flowers you so deserve. This is a passionate body where we hold values and visions near and dear to our hearts. You've listened, collaborated, steered us in the right direction, leading with compassion, courage, and love. We have a major, we have major issues to tackle, but there is no one better to lead the charge other than our Speaker, Adrian E. Adams, and I vote for you. Thank you.
Krishnan.
I proudly vote for Agent Adams as Speaker of our next City Council. Congratulations, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to our continued work together fighting for all our communities across our city. Congratulations.
Lee.
I proudly vote for Adrian E. Adams as our next Speaker, and I want to thank you, Speaker, for always being such an amazing voice for the voiceless and most marginalized in our community. So thank you and congratulations.
Lewis.
Proudly support Adrian E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Mar morado.
I vote in support of Adrian E. Adams.
Marte.
I vote for Adrian E. Adams.
Mealy.
Support Adrian E. Adams.
Menon.
I'm proud to support Adrian E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Moya.
I proudly support Adrian Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
If you wonder who I'm voting for, my vote is very important. for me, for those that knows me and understand me, I don't say anything that I don't mean. And I really, like I said, as a nurse, I clean, but I don't do what, and I'm not going to tell you. It is an immense pride and full of optimism that I vote for Speaker Adrian Adams. As we embark on a new session under the exemplary leadership of Speaker Adrian Adams, I'm filled with admiration and respect for the transformative influence she has brought to this council Speaker. Adrian Adams, you have a unique blend of compassion, resilience, and unwavering commitment, has infused a woman's touch in a heart into our proceedings. Your leadership not only resonates with a sense of exclusivity and understanding, but also leads into a future where every voice is heard and valued. I'm honored to work under your guidance and look forward to remarkable strides we will achieve together for the betterment of the entire city. You have touched our sickness. You understand it. You have touched our economic. You know that some voice in some of us were not being heard. Education, environment, no matter what I talk to you about, you always have that tender approach to understand. Even you don't talk much. You're very You're very quiet in many ways, and that's what I admire about you because I talk a lot. So I thank you for your understanding. I thank you understanding that our voice need to be part of the equation, and we have to start from the bottom up. So I thank you for that. Thank you. And Adrienne Adams, hundred percent, and if there's more, it's more too. Thank you.
Nurse.
I vote Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations, Speaker.
Ose.
I vote Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Palladino.
I vote for Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Powers.
I vote for Adrienne Adams. Congratulations.
Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
Thank you. Now, at the last dated meeting, thank, in December of 2023, thanks to the leadership of Speaker Adams, we passed transformative criminal justice legislation. Bills that multiple mayors and multiple speakers had either been unwilling or unable to get over the finish line. We cleaned up the Right to Know Act and passed the How Many Stops Act to bring real accountability to the NYPD. We are ending torture in our jails with the end of solitary confinement. And thanks to Councilmember Powers' legislation, we are ending discrimination against formerly incarcerated people who need housing. This was an inspiring package, one that I was proud to vote for, and one that would not have gotten over the finish line if not for the leadership of Speaker Adams. And I'm proud to vote for her today to continue on as our Speaker. Thank you.
Riley.
Proud to vote for my Divine Nine Sister, Adrienne E. Adams, for our Madam Speaker. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Rivera.
I just want to align myself with all the comments of my colleagues, especially Gail's nice and normal comment, and proudly support and vote for Adrienne Adams, Madam Speaker.
Gutierrez.
I proudly vote aye in support of Adrienne E. Adams. Felicidades.
Salam.
As one of the newest members of this body, I am in proud support of voting for Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations.
Salamanca.
I proudly support Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
So ordered.
Por su audaz liderazgo, por parte de todas las comunidades en la ciudad de Nueva York, pero especialmente las que más necesitan de todos nosotros. For your fierce leadership of all of our communities in the city of New York, but especially for those like mine who need us the most, I vote for Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Shulman.
As the Councilmember for the Divine Twenty-Nine, I proudly, I proudly vote for Adrienne E. Adams in the adjoining District of the Great Twenty-Eight.
Stevens.
I proudly cast my vote for Speaker Adrienne Adams and continue to lead with love, light, and openness.
Ong. Vernikov.
I vote for Adrienne Adams. Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Williams.
I proudly vote for my Southeast Queens Big Sister from inside the Twenty-Seven Council District, my favorite flex, proud representative of the Great Twenty-Eight. I'll say her name, Adrienne E. Adams. Thanks.
Juan.
I proudly vote for Adrienne E. Adams. Congratulations.
Jaeger.
I vote for Madam Speaker, one of the last remaining members of the Class of 2017. We came in together. I congratulate you, Madam Speaker, and wish you the best twenty-three months and twenty-eight days left that we have together. I vote for Adrienne Adams.
Zhuang.
I just realized I'm always will be the last member. This is as the first Chinese-American City Council Member in Brooklyn history, and I am proudly vote for our Adam Speaker, already has Speaker, I proudly vote for Adrienne E. Adams for our Speaker. Thank you. Congratulations.
By a vote of fifty votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the council has duly elected the Speaker of the City Council for the term commencing January one, 2024, and ending December thirty-first, 2025, Councilmember Adrienne Adams. I would now introduce the Attorney General of the State of New York, Letitia James, to administer the oath of office to Speaker Adams.
It's great to be in a body in light of the fact that we live in a polarized and fractured world, and it's great to be in a body where we welcome Councilmember Shulman into the Divine Nine. That's really a special, it's got to be a real special place. And it's great to see that you've left my chair empty. Thank you so much. She is wise, she's intelligent, she's sharp, she's insightful, she is focused, she is committed, and she is talented. That is your Speaker, Speaker Adrienne E. Adams. And I am proud and honored to be here amongst all of you as a fellow public servant, and it's important that we all recognize and remember that we are here to be served and not to serve ourselves, but to serve others, and to serve constituents who desperately need us at a time like this. As was mentioned, Adrienne E. Adams has broken barriers, and all of New York City is fortunate for that fact, and she is an instrument for a larger cause of justice. She's relied on her lived experiences and the wisdom that she and all of you, our colleagues, have amassed to help move New York City forward. Adrienne has led this package at the City Council in a number of bills that have been mentioned to address persistent racial disparities in maternal health, to expand access to reproductive rights. Under her leadership, she's expanded support for crime victims in communities that experience high levels of violence but are underserved by traditional services so that they too can enjoy the bounty of the city. She has created a 5.1 million budget initiative to fund community safety and victim services at the neighborhood level because by repairing the breach, we improve public safety all throughout the city of New York. She secured funding to establish New York State's first four trauma recovery centers for those who are struggling with drug abuse, struggling, unfortunately, opioid abuse, and fentanyl, and xylazine, and all of us must work to address these issues. Adrienne E. Adams and all of you in this room have prioritized addressing unfairness in the city's workforce, striking a mighty blow against structures that breed inequities, and passing legislative packages to confront the historic lack of diversity and gender and race-based pay disparities that impact our workforce. She also established the CUNY Reconnect Program that has helped thousands of working-age New Yorkers return, return to college because she understands that education is transforming, transformative, and can transform the lives of countless New Yorkers. I can stand here and cite all of the accomplishments that this young woman has made during these past two years, but I know that God is not finished with you yet, and that more is expected. And I also know that, as someone said, "Hope is the companion of power and the mother of success." And in this woman, she is both hopeful and successful, and that is why she is the Speaker of this body. You are truly an inspirational Council Speaker, a role model to many, many little girls, Black and White and Latino and Asian, they all look to you, and I am sure that you will be just as effective and dynamic as you have been in your, in your last term as you will be in the next. I thank my friend Adrienne E. Adams on a great four years, and I know we are looking forward to what comes next. All that I say is that God surrounds you and keep you safe, and that you walk with Him, and, and when you walk with Him, you feel His presence, and know that He is with you in each and every decision that you make, and know that God is in control of all of us. And so I have the honor and privilege of issuing the oath of office. And so, Madam Speaker, if you would please join me, as well as your husband. Yes. Please raise your left hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Please state your name.
Adrienne E. Adams.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter of the City of New York.
And the Charter of the City of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
The Speaker of the New York City Council.
The Speaker of the New York City Council.
In the Twenty-Eighth District.
In the Twenty-Eighth.
The Great Twenty-Eighth District. Not in Brooklyn, but in Queens.
Not in Brooklyn, Tish, but in Queens.
Heard that, Gregory? In the City of New York.
In the City of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the very best of my ability.
Congratulations, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, you have the floor.
Mr. Clerk, thank you. Good afternoon to everyone, and what a Happy New Year. I, of course, want to recognize and thank my sister in service, New York Attorney General Letitia James. Tish, with, with everything that you're working on, in the interest of the people of the State of New York, I really appreciate you taking time out of your incredibly busy schedule and doing what we know you got to do to be here for me and with me today. In case you all don't know, Tish has been a constant mentor and inspiration for me even before I first stepped foot in this council chamber seven years ago. And as our public advocate, Tish flawlessly officiated our stated meetings, as she said, promptly stayed seated in that starred red chair. And she's been such a powerful, positive influence for me and countless women throughout our city. Tish, your trailblazing work continues to uplift all New Yorkers, and we're so proud, so proud of your leadership, so proud of your persistence, so proud of your fearlessness in the pursuit of justice and equity for the people of the State of New York. I love you and I thank you so much. Next, I want to take a moment to thank the hardworking staff of the New York City Council. Thank you all, staff, every unit, every department. My sergeants, my security, my detail. And of course, I cannot leave out my own District Twenty-Eight Office Team, which is led by my District Chief of Staff, Ty Hankerson. Ty's been with me since day one of my membership on the City Council, and I thank him for his dedicated public service. We could not have accomplished what we did over these years without your commitment to this city, and we're so grateful for your contributions to this council, and we truly look forward to the next two years, or as Kalman said, Kalman's got the stopwatch on because it's his stopwatch too. Twenty-three months and? Twenty-eight days, we didn't get to the seconds. Thank you, Kalman. Thank you for that, too. And finally, thank you to our partners in labor, advocacy, and government who continue to support the health and safety of New Yorkers day in and day out. Your partnership is vital to the success of this legislative body and to all New Yorkers, and we cannot thank you enough. Two years ago, I was proud to become the first Black Speaker of the New York City Council, the first wife, the first mother, the first grandmother chosen for this position by the first women majority and the very most diverse council elected by New Yorkers in our history. And once again, we have historically gotten a diverse council in our women majority remains, and the men that get it. Together, we do reflect the rich diversity of our great city. We're made up of New Yorkers from all different backgrounds. We're nurses, social workers, educators, community leaders, advocates, small business owners, and so much more. Our members have various experiences with how the systems of our government impact the people in our communities. We have children, grandchildren, and family members whose current and future well-being depends on the work we accomplish, just as it does for each of our constituents. The diversity of this council and its women majority have led us to govern differently than our predecessors. Our perspectives have shaped our legislative priorities, empowering us to address longstanding issues that have not been adequately prioritized. Our relationships to our communities have enabled us to unlock equitable opportunities that were previously inaccessible to so many New Yorkers who look like us. This allowed us to make strides in confronting ingrained challenges within our city and society which will require our sustained commitment to fully address. For example, we took action to improve maternal health for all New Yorkers, passing a historic package of laws to push the city towards addressing the severe racial disparities that disproportionately harm Black women and birthing people and other people of color. When Black New Yorkers are nine times more likely to die from a pregnancy-related issue than white New Yorkers, our attention must be focused on resolving this longstanding crisis. We knew this, though, as more than a statistic, as mothers and As mothers and grandmothers, parents and spouses, and loving friends, our experiences and stories, including my own, informed our work as lawmakers. We must renew our commitment and build upon our efforts to end this persisting injustice that continues to harm families. We advanced our mental health roadmap, which recognizes community-based care programs as proven solutions to promote well-being and prevent crises. We expanded the city's commitment of resources to these under-invested-in programs as part of a critical intervention to address the mental health crisis. However, getting New Yorkers the help they need will require us to make even deeper investments into our communities, which we are prepared to do. To bolster economic and educational opportunities, we expanded the city's Summer Youth Employment Program and pioneered CUNY Reconnect to help working-age New Yorkers finish their degrees to improve their earning potential. Thousands of New Yorkers seized this opportunity. And we quickly blew past our initial goal to re-enroll 10,000 students to reach over 25,000 New Yorkers, the majority of whom are women and people of color who previously left school because of family or work obligations. This is tremendous. Together, we have prioritized equitable access to opportunity by expanding fair fares, creating pipelines to civil service jobs and advancement for women, people of color, and marginalized New Yorkers, supporting a healthier industrial sector in our city, and promoting entrepreneurial and small-business growth for underserved communities. We must continue to take critical steps forward to improve equitable economic outcomes for all New Yorkers and working families across our city. We're most effective when we treat our challenges as the interconnected issues they are rather than as isolated ones. The council's approach to public safety has been a prime example. Public safety is access to mental health as well as resources and opportunities that help New Yorkers meet their basic needs. We have prioritized pushing the city to better meet the needs of crime survivors in communities that experience violence the most rather than simply paying lip service and using their tragedies to advance ineffective policies that make us less safe, as so often happens. Our city and communities deserve a more sensible conversation on public safety that advances new comprehensive safety solutions and is built upon lessons learned from our past mistakes. We have pursued an all-of-the-above approach to public safety because this is the pathway to contend with the legacies of harm that have impacted generations of New Yorkers, particularly in underserved Black and Latino communities. We have also recognized housing as public safety and began confronting our city's housing crisis as the pathway to a safer New York. We've started to shift how the council approaches equitable housing development by making clear that we are most successful when all stakeholders work together and all of us contribute to solving the housing crisis. The council will have to be a constructive force in helping our city emerge stronger from the severe lack of homes that has deepened our crisis of affordability and homelessness. By treating housing as a part of an ecosystem that can help deliver health, safety, and prosperity, we are better able to utilize housing as a tool to invest holistically in the strength of our New Yorkers. That is how we can help New Yorkers remain here in the city they love. We passed critical laws to advance climate leadership and environmental justice in our city as well as so many other critical solutions while prioritizing our oversight role to hold city agencies and the administration accountable. We stood our ground on principled fights when the best interests of New Yorkers and our city were at stake. We exercised our role as the equal branch of government through checks and balances to executive authority, which helped to strengthen our democracy and the governance of New York. We worked with our leaders in government, our elective leaders, as we shout out today Congressman Gregory Meeks, Congressman Adriano Espaillat, and our former colleague Paul Vallone. We have so much to be proud of. Our work over these past two years have made a marked difference in our constituents' lives. To our returning members, I thank you. Your tenacity, thoughtfulness, and service on behalf of your districts and our city make our city stronger, and your leadership is critical to this body. To our new members, Youssef, Kristi, Chris, Susan, we welcome you. The various experiences and expertise you bring to this body will be so important for the challenges ahead of us. I encourage you all to rely on my office, central staff, and your colleagues as resources to navigate the intricacies of your new roles and the legislative process. While we each represent unique districts with many distinct needs, together, colleagues, we make up one city and one body. Our shared commitment to service and the goal to improve life for all New Yorkers is the North Star that must unite us all. As a body, we are stronger together and can succeed by working together. While we helped our city emerge from the worst of a global pandemic, our work is not yet finished, and our efforts towards a full recovery are just as critical as they were before. Our full leadership team will be announced in the coming days. Today, I can say that the selections for part of it will include Diana Ayala as our Deputy Speaker, Amanda Farias as our Majority Leader, and Silvina Brooks-Powers as Majority Whip, placing all women in the top leadership positions of the council and a Latina as Majority Whip as Majority Leader for the first time in history. I am confident that together we will help lead this council and prepare the institution for future success. And colleagues, I especially want to thank Councilmember Keith Powers and express my gratitude for his leadership, which will remain integral to our team and to this council. As a body, we must be tenacious in our leadership and remain clear, focused, and humble in the face of our challenges because they are deeply ingrained in our society. We will need to renew our efforts to address the pre-existing disparities widened by the pandemic that block women, working families, and our communities of color from securing stability and opportunity. Although the equitable future we seek may take years to arrive, every ounce of progress we secure today will bring us closer to what New Yorkers deserve. And when the path forward feels muddled, we can work with advocates, organizations, and community stakeholders to clear the way because they are our partners. When the challenges feel too big to handle on our own, we can work with our colleagues across all levels of government because the crises we face require our collective efforts to solve. And when we're short on answers, colleagues, we can sit with our constituents and hear their stories and solutions because they possess a wealth of experiences and knowledge that can guide our way forward. Colleagues, together, we can chip away at the injustices that our communities have endured for too long and deliver more of what New Yorkers deserve. We can move our city forward. As I look at this brand-new body, I have such high hopes for what we all will accomplish together. It is an honor of a lifetime to serve the great people of New York City alongside of all of you and to serve all of you. Thank you.
Messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
M3, nomination and election of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections.
I make a motion to elect the following councilmembers as members of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. As temporary Chair of this committee, I nominate Councilmember Diana Ayala. I also nominate Councilmembers Joseph Borelli, Justin Brannan, Gail Brewer, Silvina Brooks-Powers, Crystal Hudson, Keith Powers, Rafael Salamanca, and Pirina Sanchez as members of the Rules Committee.
M4, nomination and election of Deputy Speaker.
I also hereby move that the Councilmember Diana Ayala be designated as Deputy Speaker for the council. I now ask for a roll-call vote on the motion to adopt these nominations. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
I've heard really good things about Ayala, so I vote aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Bacher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Feliz.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marmorato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Meili.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya. Councilmember Moya will come back. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
Aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
I proudly vote aye for my mentor.
Ung. Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. Juan.
Aye.
Yeager.
Aye.
Juang.
Aye.
Borelli.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's general order calendar items are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions.
M5 and M6, designation of Majority Leader and Majority Whip.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M7, designation of Minority Leader.
After a duly convened meeting of the Republican Conference, Councilmember Joseph C. Borelli was elected Minority Leader of the City Council. Mr. Minority Leader, would you like to make a statement?
You know, unlike the Speaker, my standing ovation usually happens when I sit down, and you all get excited. First, I want to congratulate the Speaker for a number of reasons, many of which were highlighted before. But one thing that was left unsaid was that she is the first Speaker in over a decade to have to be Speaker and deal with the challenges of office while at the same time running for reelection and worrying about the council's reelection that hasn't been done in a decade. And to that particular Speaker's credit, she didn't know she was running for reelection up until about three months, four months, before she had to start running. So you really had a more challenging experience than many Speakers who came before you, and that should be part of this record and part of your commendation. So I'd like to briefly welcome the new members for coming today and to remind us all that we are going to be part of this body on the 400th anniversary of this city. For 400 years, four centuries, people have sat in these seats before us and each with their own unique visions and goals and agendas and ideas of what makes a New Yorker a New Yorker. They've managed to keep this city going for a long time. This office that we inherited, with all due respect to my friends in Congress, this is 200 years older than your office. And I had to look it up. It's actually a year older than the Attorney General, wherever she happened to be right now. But don't forget that. And in this building, there's so many paintings and plaques dedicated to people who have come before us. And I sat in the Minority Leader's office for two years now, a little over two years, and I finally decided to look up who is the subject of this massive painting that happens to be located behind my desk. It's a guy named Ward Benjamin Burnett, and he was a general in the Mexican-American War. And that's not why his picture is here in New York City, in City Hall. His picture's here because in the 1850s, he was tasked with creating the water system that was to supply the 140,000 people who lived in the City of Brooklyn at that time. And when he got the job, when he was hired as the chief engineer, he said it would cost $4,025,000. Job gets done. A few years later, he has to produce a report to the common council. It turns out, 167 years ago, they liked reporting bills, too. So he gives this report, and he says the final price is $4,025,000. So the imparting wisdom I'll leave with you is that if you are diligent and careful with the public's money and you treat it as your own, even in the headwinds of this budget crisis that we're about to confront, you, too, can have your portrait in the Minority Leader's office. Thank you.
M8, designation of Minority Whip.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Thank you. I'll now call upon Speaker Adrienne Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The charter meeting of January 3, 2024, is hereby adjourned.